Well, good evening, folks. It is Tuesday, August 24th, and despite what it might say on the clock at the back in the back of the room, it is 7:01 PM, and we are in the council chambers of the city of Platteville. And with that, I call the meeting of the common council of the city of Platteville to order. Candace will start with roll call.
Eileen Nichols. Kathy Kop. Excuse. Excused. Jason Arts.
Here.
Lynn Parrott. Isaac Shanley.
You're.
Barbara Dos.
Here.
Ken Killian.
Here.
Hey, the first item on our agenda is consideration of the consent calendar. The following items may be approved on a single motion or vote and vote due to their routine nature or previous discussion. Please indicate to me if you would prefer separate discussion or action on any item. First are the council minutes from August 10th, 2021, the regular meeting. We have payment of bills, appointments to boards and commissions, and tonight I am reappointing Robin Fatsinger as the Platteville Community Arboretum representative to the Community Safe Routes Committee. We have licenses in our packet, a Class B combination beer and liquor license for 280 West Main LLC, Steve Becker agent. We have a temporary Class B to serve fermented malt beverages to the friends of our gallery doing businesses, Roundtree Gallery for artist reception on Friday, September 10th. We have a temporary Class B license to serve fermented malt beverages to the Platteville J.C.'s at Pitt Street Legion Park for dairy days from Friday, September 10th at 5:00 PM until 5:00 PM on Sunday, September 12th. And then we have several one- and two-year operator licenses to sell and serve alcohol. We also have permits in our packet tonight. One is a parade permit for the UW Platteville Homecoming scheduled for Saturday, October 23rd. That would be at 10:00 AM. And the second permit is for a street closing, South Hickory Street between West Pine Street and Greenwood Avenue for the Newman Olympics on Saturday, September 25th from 11:00 AM to 8:00 PM. Your pleasure.
I move we approve the consent calendar.
Okay, we have a motion and a second to approve the consent calendar as presented. Candace will vote.
Nichols. Arts.
Yes.
Parrott. Shanley.
Yes.
Dos.
Yes.
Killian.
Yes.
Motion carries.
Okay, next on our agenda are citizens' comments, observations, and petitions, if any. I have, for those of you in the audience, I have several green sheets of people who have requested to speak. It is our general policy that if you want to speak on a topic that's listed on the agenda, we wait until that part of the agenda to call on you so that all of the information is at the same time. So I do have your green sheets, and if anybody else has any desire to speak on an agenda item, fine. If anybody has another item, this is often when we hear announcements about, I don't know, coming events or things like that at this time, but I don't have anybody who's registered to speak on anything like that.
No, correct. I just want to give a shout out, obviously, to both our police department and our fire department for all of their work today, obviously, with the storms. As many people probably don't realize, when we do have inclement weather, they're kind of the first line of defense, so they're out in the scene. So obviously, a big kudos to all of those individuals who were kind of making sure that our community is safe.
All right, we'll move on then to reports that are in our packets aboard the tourism committee. Jason, anything to add?
Just that numbers are going up in terms of room tax and other. Hopefully, that continues.
Okay. Zoning Board of Appeals, Isaac.
Nothing to add.
Water and Sewer.
No addition on my part.
Not on mine. Isaac, anything?
No.
Okay, Library Board, Lynn.
There's no addition. They still aren't looking for staff.
Still looking for staff? Yeah. And I should mention at this point that one of the reasons I only made one appointment to a board or commission tonight is I'm still looking for people to serve on boards and commissions. Airport Commission, Kathy is not present. Nicola or Adam, anything to add on the Airport Commission?
At the moment, you know, as, thank you, as we were sort of coming out of the pandemic, we thought, anyway, you know, there was business picking up, and the phase two of the master plan was presented in its draft version.
Community Safe Routes.
Nothing to add.
Okay. Then we'll move on to our action items tonight. The first one is ordinance 2105 amending section 3606 of the municipal code pertaining to alcohol licenses. And Candace, we'll let you talk about that.
Right, good evening. My name is Candace Claus. I'm the city clerk here. This year, we had Wisconsin Act 21, which amended our chapter 125 of the Wisconsin state statutes to allow Class B licenses to sell intoxicating liquor by the glass in a tamper-proof container. This is in order to be served off-premise. So the idea is that the individual would go to the establishment, order a mixed drink. It would then be sealed in a tamper-proof container, and they would be able to leave the premise to consume it elsewhere, take it home, obviously not consuming it in public, which would go against our public open intoxicant ordinance that we have. So in working with the city attorney, William Cole, attached is the ordinance that was prepared. This was presented both to the License Committee as well as to the council during information discussion at the last meeting, and this ordinance will update our current code to reflect, basically bringing us in compliance with the state statute. Any questions?
Questions?
My question from last time was, has a tamper-proof evidence seal been developed? And the answer at that time was no.
No.
My question now is why are we passing this ordinance if there's no seal?
The Department of Revenue is, we've not been given any direction on that as far as it's basically been open to the establishment's interpretation of what a tamper-proof seal would be. They haven't been given specific, they have to have this type of seal on it or this type of tape or lid or anything like that. They're kind of able to use their best judgment on that.
I would like to suggest that section three of the ordinance be changed as follows. It says this ordinance shall be in full force and effect from and after its passage and publication as required by law. And my suggestion is an development of a tamper-proof evidence seal. So this ordinance would not be in effect until a seal is developed.
Okay. I can.
So, no, that would be asking to amend the draft ordinance. So Ken, if you're asking to amend this draft, then you would need to make a motion to amend, and it would require a second.
I move that section three be changed to read at the end after the word "law" and development of a tamper-proof evidence seal. So this ordinance would not be in effect until that has taken place. Otherwise, it doesn't make sense to approve something, and it's not suitable yet as far as usage. That's my opinion.
And then a motion to amend requires a second. Do I hear a second to Ken's motion?
If questions, can we, or?
Well, I think we have this amendment on the floor. So the question is, do we have a second to the amendment? I think I have to ask the third time. Do we have a second to the amendment? Okay, due to no second to the amendment, the move to amend fails. Okay, Jason, now you have another question.
My question was, had the motion gone forward, who would be, whose responsibility would it be to develop the tamper-proof lid? Does that come from the state, or is that, you know, something that the municipality has to do? Or is that another burden on the back of, you know, the business owners? Whose responsibility would that be?
Well, I think that's the big question here is, or the big conundrum, so to speak, is that Wisconsin Act 21 made this legal with their language. Kind of puts all of us in a rather unusual position because they're the ones that made the law. We're simply amending our law to reflect the law. So as long as they haven't defined it, I don't think it's up to us to define it.
Correct, I mean, correct. You can always be more, in any ordinance or policy as the city, the city always has the ability to be more restrictive. But I think to answer your question, Jason, if you're going to put that caveat on within our ordinance, without a funding mechanism, you are enforcing the business entity to have to figure out, to comply with whatever the regulation is you're putting in place. So if you're going to require it to be tamper-proof, you, we would probably have to go back and get some further clarification from the attorney in regards to what, what is the definite, you know, because again, the state, for lack of a better term, has kind of punted to allow discretion from the business to say, yes, this is our tamper-proof seal, whether it's, you know, it doesn't say, it doesn't have to be taped, you know, it can be, as long as it's sealed, that's the definition. So it would be, you know, if we then wanted to go a step further, we would have to develop, what is our definition of tamper-proof seal? Is that, you know, some type of tape? Is it evidence tape? Is it a specific glass bottle, whatever? You'd have to get more into the weeds of that, and that's probably why the guidance we're receiving is to be a bit less.
The state is supposed to develop this seal and not done their work.
Right.
Period. Because this doesn't make sense.
And unfortunately, it wouldn't be the first time. Okay. Do we, is there any more discussion on this particular item? The ordinance 2105 to amend section 3606 of our code pertaining to alcohol licenses, bringing our code in compliance with the state law that was act 21.
I would move to approve.
It's 2105, repealing and recreating section 3606.
Second.
Parenthesis six of the municipal code. Okay, we have a motion by Eileen and a second by, I believe, Isaac to approve ordinance 2105 as proposed. Candace will vote.
Nichols. Arts.
Yes.
Parrott.
Yes.
Shanley.
Yes.
Dos.
Yes.
Killian. Motion carries.
Okay. Moving on to our second agenda item tonight, this is resolution 2119, authorizing execution of the Department of Natural Resources Principal For Given Financial Assistance Agreement, which we entered into, it appears, in 2018.
Yes.
Okay. Power.
Thank you. Back in 2017 and 2018, we had a similar program for our lead service line replacement program. Those programs expired. The DNR came out with a slightly modified program that will be by calendar year only. And so unfortunately, due to delays at the DNR, we did not get our agreement paperwork until last week for calendar year 2021. So we're asking that the common council approve this resolution so that we can sign the paperwork and do lead service line replacements using this same funding mechanism for the rest of this calendar year.
Okay, questions by council? Question? Isaac, any question? Lynn? Ken?
No question.
Eileen? Jason? Okay. So do I hear a motion?
Big motion to approve resolution 21-19, authorizing the city clerk and the common council president to execute the documents related to the Department of Natural Resources Principal For Given Financial Assistance big agreements for 881 debt.
Okay, we have a motion by Isaac and a second by Eileen to approve resolution 2119. Candace will vote.
Nichols. Arts.
Yes.
Parrott. Shanley.
Yes.
Dos.
Yes.
Killian. Motion carries.
Okay, the next item, actually, the next three items, C, D, and E on our agenda, all involve the sale of bonds. So Nicola, do you want to start us off and then introduce our colleague from Ellis?
Sure, I'll get us started off. So as you know, each year, the city borrows funds to support and fund CIP projects. We generally borrow general obligation bonds or issue general obligation bonds for street reconstruction in the city. And we frequently also issue water and sewer system revenue bonds for CIP projects in the utilities. This year, we also took advantage of the low interest rates in the marketplace to refund, to an advance refund, some revenue bonds in the utility as well. And today was the receiving of the bids on those three different bond issues, and it was exciting news. And so with that, I'm going to hand over to David Ferris from Ellis, who is our municipal advisor. I think it is, yes. You may have to lift it up a little bit.
It looked like it turned on as soon as I said that, so. So the first report that you have in front of you is for the 2021A. That's the general obligation corporate, fund your streets and stormwater project this year. We took bids this morning at 9:30. We had a great showing, there were seven bids. Typically, we want to see at least three. And so we had a really good showing and had a really good competition and saved you saved you the amount of interest on the loan. So on the first page is a summary of the issue. As I said, it's for the cost of some of your street improvements and basic sewerage projects, but those are stormwater nature. We also went under, went a rating call with S&amp;P. Nicola and Adam did a fantastic job of selling the city and telling what the good things that are going on here, and they affirmed you at as a double A minus stable, which is good. As I said, there were seven bids with the low bidder being UMB Bank out of Kansas. If you want to see what the other bids were, you can see that on page three and four, there are the seven bidders, and the low was UMB, as I said, with a true interest rate of 1%. And the high bid was 1.56% by Bernardi. So that difference in the interest rates that were bid by the underwriters basically was a difference in interest costs of about $52,000. So, you know, competitive bids obviously give you a chance to have people, the more that bid on you, the better chance you have of getting a good interest rate. And today, we came in, you know, with a 1.23%, which is, I think, over about a 50. That's a pretty good interest rate that you can receive. And the one thing that we disclosed in our email to the staff today is that we did, we always do a comparison of the pricing of the bonds, and basically, your issue this morning beat a lot of the most recent competitive bids that we've had lately, basically all across the structure of the interest rate or the repayments. So fantastic news. Because of the reduction in issuance costs and a premium that the underwriter gave us, we were able to downsize the issue by $30,000. That actually, you know, obviously, you have less than repay, so that's a great thing. Also, you know, kind of just jump to page six. On that page, you can see that, in addition to, at the bottom, you can see at the bottom that the sale results, we were able to downsize by 30,000 because of the reduction in the interest rates. The interest that we showed you at the pre-sale report are $28,000 less. And the premium that you received from the underwriter was about $57,000. So total principal and interest costs were about $115,000 lower than what we showed you about. Back on page five, you can see a kind of comparison of what we showed you in July. You know, obviously, you needed the money to do the project, so that didn't change, but we received the premium. Some of that premium had to be deposited to debt service and will be used to pay some of your interest expense for the next couple of years. And then you can kind of see the difference in the issuance costs where some of the issuance costs were reduced as part of the bid. Otherwise, on page six, again, we do a, basically, we're solving for the tax rate. And as part of the five-year plan, we're kind of hovering around the $2.40 tax rate number. And so when we structured this after the bid, we tried to hit that same amount. And when we get to that part of the financial management plan, that's kind of the number we're aiming at to be able to fill in some of the projects in the future that you, you're potentially going to undertake, so. Page seven is just a breakout between the repayments of the streets and the stormwater. Page eight is your debt capacity calculation. The percentages on here, Nicola and I kind of talked about it, and she kind of wanted to see the percentage of the self-imposed that's being used. So those percentages are the percentage of the amount that's being used, but your actual debt capacity, which is 5% of your equalized value per state statute, you're actually at about 53, 54% of that statutory amount. So you're in pretty good shape there. You've got quite a bit of room left. You know, that's something that when we started helping you with the financial management plan, that you were a lot higher, and that's come down quite a bit and continues to improve. We've included the rating report from Moody's. I won't go through this in detail. I know you've got a lot on the agenda after I'm done. But on page 11 are some things that talks about, you know, what they think about the city's financial status. A lot of strong management, strong budgetary, some strong liquidity stuff. But you can take a read through this. I think they think that you're doing the right things, they are on the right path. Last thing in this document is just a graph of the interest rates over the last three years. And as you can see, we're still in a really good interest rate market, and we hit this at a pretty good time. You guys did really well today on this one. Any questions on the A issue? Do you want to take up the resolutions individually?
I think it would work to take up the resolution after you present, and then we can move to the next presentation.
Okay, so.
Just, just to update, because of the downsizing of the size of the issue, you'll want to approve the $1,009,075,000 as opposed to what was in your package from Bond Council last week.
Okay, so this would be resolution 2120, awarding the sale of $1,975,000 in general obligation corporate purpose bond, series 2021A. So in your, in your material that you received, it said $2,500,000. Instead, the amount is $1,975,000. So do we have a, do we have a motion to adopt resolution 2120, awarding the sale of these general obligation corporate purpose bonds, series 2021A?
So moved?
Back in.
Okay, we have a motion and a second to adopt resolution 2120 with the adjusted amount. Candace will vote.
Nichols.
Yes.
Arts.
Yes.
Parrott.
Yes.
Shanley.
Yes.
Dos.
Yes.
Killian.
Yes.
Motion carries.
Okay, next, we have resolution 2121, authorizing the issuance and sale of $2,400,000 in water and sewer system revenue bond, series 2021B.
Okay, so in this issue, we are basically financing your capital improvements in the water sewer system. So this is for new money. The rating for the water and sewer bonds was also a double A minus, which is, I think, it's an affirmation of your previous issue as well. So you're, you're doing well by keeping that. On this issue, we only had four bidders, that's still pretty good. The winning bidder was BOK Financial Securities out of Milwaukee, Wisconsin, and they came in with a low bid of 1.4676. So revenue bonds are not quite, they're a little more risky. And so the interest rates typically come in a little bit more, a little higher than they would for a general obligation tax exempt. So the bidders, like we showed you on the other day, on the other issue is, if I can get my fingers to move here. Now, there's no page numbering, so it's about three pages in where you have the bid tabulation with BOK being the top bidder and Baird out of Milwaukee being the bottom bidder. In this issue, there is only a savings of about $13,000 from high to low. They were a little tighter in their bidding on this one, so that wasn't quite as big, but you still saved that much. And the principle on this one actually was reduced by 150,000. We received enough issuance cost decrease and premiums that you were able to downsize this issue by 150,000, down to $1,890,000. And let's see, they also, this issue has term bonds, so in this, on this issue, there will be a paying agent of bond trust services on this issue because of those term.
Okay, questions on these revenue, this revenue bond theories? For those in the audience, general obligation bonds are paid through property tax assessment. Revenue bonds are paid through revenue received, in this case, from water and sewers. So when you pay your water and sewer bill, part of that revenue is what's paying these bonds. Okay, any questions of David or Nicola? Otherwise, I entertain a motion on resolution 2121, authorizing the issuance and sale of $1,890,000 in water and sewer system revenue bond, series 2021B.
Sold. Second.
Okay, we have a motion and a second. Candace will vote on this.
Nichols.
Yes.
Arts.
Yes.
Parrott. Shanley.
Yes.
Dos.
Yes.
Killian.
Yes.
Motion carries.
Okay, and the final resolution tonight in terms of these bond issues is resolution 2122, authorizing issuance and sale of, in this case, $4,965,000 taxable water and sewer system revenue refunding bond, series 2021C.
So the last report is the 2021C taxable water and sewer system revenue refunding bonds. These, this is an advance refunding, which means that it was not within the call date. And we had an opportunity to give the city some savings on these bonds by refunding them early. The money will be actually borrowed and put into escrow until those bonds are actually come due. I don't, Brian did not have a number on here as far as what we had told you that the savings could be on this issue, but the, in the end, the savings from refunding these bonds is about 721,000 of future value, which, you know, it's the cash you would be spending each year. And if you, if you basically discount that back to the present, it's a savings of about 585,000. So anyway, you look at it, it's a real nice savings. It gives your water and sewer utility some really nice savings. And the one thing that I'll, I want to make sure that I add on this issue is the one thing that was kind of a big deal when we were talking to S&amp;P was the coverage. And we need to have at least a 1.60 coverage. This issue, even though 2020 says 1.60 right now, that had a lot to do with the pandemic and the fact that. and the fact that the UW platville was not using as much. So there was a little bit of an issue with our, our operation. So it kind of swayed that number a little bit down more than it would have been in a normal year. But the savings that we were able to get out of this, this advanced refunding really popped up that coverage and you look, you know, the coverages are, are way above 1.60 in a few years here. So it was really a great shot in the arm for the utility.
Okay, questions of David?
Just, just so you know, just to make you aware of this, because we were talking about bidders before, you did have six bidders on this one. So this one drew a little bit of interest as well. And because of those extra bidders, we're able to save about 72,000 in interest from the high bid to the low bid. So.
Okay, do I hear a motion on resolution 2122 authorizing the issuance and sale of $4,965,000 in taxable water and sewer system revenue refunding bonds series 2021C? Okay, we have a motion by Jason and a second by Eileen to adopt the resolution. We will vote. Candace?
Nichols?
Yes.
Arts?
Yes.
Parrot? Shanley?
Yes.
Dos?
Yes.
Killian? Motion carries.
Thank you.
Thank you for letting me come in. This is, this is a great, a great sale for the city.
Good. Okay, we're moving on to the last gen, action agenda item, which is the Platteville Community Arboretum City Working Agreement. Howard?
Yes. In co, in consultation with the PCA, they are still reviewing this document and the proposed changes that I've made. And at this time, they're recommending that the council table this action.
But your motion to table?
Move the table to a later date.
Okay, and, and we have a non-specific later date. So, okay. Candace will vote on the move to table.
Nichols?
Yes.
Sorry, Arts?
Yes.
Parrot?
Yes.
Shanley?
Yes.
Dos?
Yes.
Killian? Motion carries.
Okay. Information, and we're going to move on into the information and discussion items on our agenda. The first of those is the council rules.
Yes. So this is something obviously that we will be continuing to do for the rest of the year. What I would like to focus on tonight primarily are rules number two and rule number three. So as you look in the rule number two, it currently states the following. Special meetings may be called by the council president or by any two alderpersons or by the city manager upon written notice of the time and purpose, therefore to each member of the council. What I'm proposing, pretty simple, is obviously with the change of times, we have electronic means that we tend to get ahold of you by email. So we'd like to be looking at making that change and putting that in there. It's pretty basic, pretty simple, but I guess any questions on that? Didn't think so. All right. Rule number three, this is the one where we're going to get into a little bit more discussion. So currently it states the following, the council may by a majority vote of those present, adjourn from time to time to a specific date and hour. No action shall be taken unless a quorum is present and as provided by section 64.07-3 of the Wisconsin statutes, a majority of the members of the council shall constitute a quorum and a majority vote of all the members of the council shall be necessary to adopt any ordinance or resolution. So this is where you kind of need to start thinking a little bit. So as we talked about last, at our last meeting, you know, we had the conversation that the preference obviously for the council would be to meet in person. But obviously with, as we've learned with COVID-19 and the pandemic and just with changing times, there is the ability that some council members may need to meet via Zoom. So the conversation we had last time was potentially to allow a council member to be able to maybe two times a year. That's something we'll have to kind of get into the weeds and kind of understand. So I think the question that the council kind of has to think about is, so a quorum, obviously with four of you, a quorum is four. So you would have to have four at every meeting in order to constitute a quorum. The question that's up for debate tonight is, are you open to having that quorum be that it must actually be in the council chambers? So you would be required at all times to have at least four members in the council chambers? Or are you open to the fact that that could be a combination of a mix? Whereas you'd have some people in the chambers, you'd have some people via either electronic, you know, either Zoom or by phone. So that is kind of one of the questions that I guess we would like to get some debate from council members on where you think, what your thoughts are in regards to, what do you want to define as a quorum?
Jason, any thoughts?
I think as of right now, my, I would be leaning towards having four people physically present in the council chambers at least for quorum. And then also I would be in favor of discussing the, the two absences or, or two meetings a year where if you wanted to attend for whatever reason via Zoom, you could do that.
I think.
I agree. I think for quorum, I think at least four people should be in the chamber cameras. And then leave up for discussion, the, the two or whatever number we should decide later for the, via Zoom or whatever else for the other people that can be here.
Hey, Lynn?
Yeah, I always agreed to the Zoom scenario. Or as a quorum. Yeah, I would agree to that too. It's, yeah.
I also agree with that. Four, four present and then the others electronically or by. Dan?
Four persons present at the council in the chambers here.
I agree with four. So I think that's pretty unanimous that.
Perfect.
We all tend to agree with that. I think we've had, we, we met enough via Zoom that we we're ready to meet in person.
Sick of it.
Even if we have to do that.
Sure.
So.
Okay. So then I guess since we just have a little bit of time, rule number four, this one is, I think is again, should be relatively simple. This currently states the following, this is essentially the order that agendas are set in. The proposed changes that we would be looking to do are the addition of closed session added between nine and 10. We don't actually have that in our council rules. And then also the addition of a work session to be added between nine and 10. And then this is something that can be debated, the verbiage change from consent calendar to consent agenda. That's something that is typical in municipalities is they have a consent agenda versus the consent calendar. It's, it's again, it's a horse at peace. It's whatever your personal preferences. So any issues with those three changes?
I have no issue with one or two. You know, I never heard of a consent calendar or consent agenda. So what it's called doesn't matter to me. Okay. I think we're done with that.
They were done with that.
All right. So we will now move on to flag raising policy.
Okay, so this was something that obviously started at, it was brought to the council. If you remember back in 2020, the city council graciously approved to allow the pride flag to be flown in conjunction with the governor's commendation essentially for the entire month of June. Out of that came a very relevant question as to in regards to, does the city have any type of official policies or procedures in regards to flags? The request was made to have city staff come up with a policy and present that to the council. That was done. It basically then was asked at the time, the task force for inclusion, diversity and equity be kind of the kind of first step of reviewing that policy to see if they had any questions. They spent the couple of meetings in May, June and July looking at that policy. And essentially it came back to the council at the last meeting, the first meeting in July. So what you have in front of you tonight are some of the changes that were requested to be made. I did those in red. So as you can see, under in the overview section, there was a question in regards to where people should be directed. That would tell them what exactly is the, you know, size that it can be, ensuring they're not infringing on any of the actual United States flag codes or rights. So that was put in there to say all flags flown by the city of Platteville will be in accordance with title four, flag and seal, seat of government in the state of the United States code. The other thing that was added in here is under policy in section E, there were, there were two changes. D was to be in compliance with what was on the application. It's four weeks. And then E is a person submitting this would be responsible for the cost of providing the city of Platteville with their flag. So therefore it makes it pretty clear cut and dry that the city is not going to be paying for the flag. It would have to be either donated or given to us to fly. Then in the responsibility section, there was a stipulation that was added saying the tide committee will be responsible for making formal recommendations to the common council for any organization which appeals an application either approval or denial. That will kind of be the starting ground for any type of appeals process. And then if you look at the last page, which is the actual flag raising application, it was requested to have kind of the name, email and phone number portion be put first before they start putting the organization or, or request. And then also changing some verbiage to say, I have read the criteria and believe that my application will qualify. So those were the changes that were made.
Okay, anybody have any additional questions, suggestions or similar for a flag raising policy?
I have a couple.
Dan?
Suggestions. First of all is under policy. And this would be A, B. And B, I'm suggesting should read either of the following, the request must be tied towards, that's what reads now tied towards. I'm suggesting connected to a community event that benefits the residents of the city. Or use the terminology associated with. So I'm giving two possibilities.
Sure.
Possibility to change tied towards to connect the two or associated with. So that's, that's one place.
Yep.
Next one is a minor one again, but this is B. I think it's a matter of grammar. It says B. The raising of an organization group's flag will not violate any previously established city of Platteville ordinance or policy. Any referring, in my opinion, to one thing. So any ordinance or any policy. So I take out the plural on policy, make that singular because it is not going to take two, three policies to give a violation here.
Sure.
And my next one, my last one is under tied. And this is clarification. It says the committee will be responsible for making formal recommendations to the common council for any organization's appeals and application approval or denial. So does this mean that the other organization, some organization disapproves an approval?
Correct.
You. Is that clear enough to everybody here? I, I think you should spell it out maybe a little bit more. You're trying.
Sure.
You're trying to look at application approval.
Right. So essentially if, if a community member or an organization felt that the city did approve a flag to be flown and had concerns about that approval, the tied organization would be the first tat committee that would review that request. And then same thing as to a denial, if we were to deny something, you know, if somebody wanted to challenge that denial, it would start with the task force, tie task force, and then a recommendation would be made to the council for your formal decision.
So. Does that need any?
Sure. I can add, try to add a little additional.
Any additional wording? Because when I first read it, it didn't make sense.
Sure.
Okay, that's all I have.
Anybody else with anything? I just have one question and that deals with the flag itself.
Yes.
Flags themselves. Is there any place in this policy that says that the flag that is to be flown is to be a recognized or commercially made or in other words, can I just go out and make a flag and bring it to you and say, my organization just developed this flag? Nobody else has a flag like this, but I want you to fly this one. Personally, I think it should be that there should be some consideration given to flags that are, I don't know. I don't know if there's such a thing as a flag registry or I, I really don't know.
Yeah, no, that's a legitimate question. Yes, I'm, Howard, do you know, I mean, as far as in the past, have we required? I don't think we've had any requirements in regards to it has to meet a certain, that might be part of the actual title that we have, but I don't think we've had any specifics. I mean, in, in, in the past, the only, the only other flag that we've ever flown until last year was the United Nations flag. And so that one is a flag by a recognized international organization. And then, like we said last year, we flew the pride flag, which is, is a nationally recognized flag. So we've never had that come up before. You know, if there's, I, I don't know of a flag registry, but we can certainly look into it. Yeah, I can certainly look into adding, I'll check the actual chapter that we have on there that we've indicated, but then I also can look at adding some additional verbiage to E that would kind of indicate, you know, some of the things that you've mentioned as concerns.
Good. Anybody else? I guess I just do have a question when under overview and it says all flags flown by the city of Platteville will be in accordance with title four, flag and seal. Seat of government and the states of the United States code. So is there anything in there that reflects?
That's what I'm thinking is there probably is. So I will look to see if there is and maybe spell that out. So then when we get to section E, it kind of either reverts back to it or, or kind of spells it out a little further because I believe there is, I believe it says.
Yes, I'm not sure what a title four flag is.
So that is basically the entire actual definition of what is chapter four of the United States code. It's spelled out that way.
All right, then I guess this will stay for information and discussion next time.
Sure.
Okay. The next item on our agenda is the residential development project potential. Adam?
Okay. So obviously that is probably why the majority of people are here tonight is to talk about this. So what essentially is occurring is as part of the 2021 to 2023 strategic plan, there's been a goal that was established by the city of Platteville to seek partnerships with private developers to result in a new single-family housing subdivision. So city staff in the common council has been reviewing with developer Michael Ulster Holtz about a potential residential development located within the Golden Heights subdivision of the city of Platteville. Currently off Pioneer Road is a platted addition that accounts for 18 single-family lots to be created. The subdivision addition was plotted roughly, I had 40 years ago. That's a mistake. It actually was 26 years ago. So it was plotted in 1995. So there's a couple of things that as the city, obviously we are going to need to continue to vet. And obviously as the common council, you're going to want to vet as well. So currently the subdivision, as we've talked about, has been plotted for 18 homes. One of the questions that will be continued to discuss is whether or not the city of Platteville and obviously the common council wants to enter into a subdivision reimbursement agreement. As we've talked about in the strategic plan and also later on in my staff note, as we talk about within the housing study that was done, it alludes to the fact that the city definitely needs to review potential incentive programs to try to entice development. If you look at this development, again, it was plotted in 1995. There currently is not a home on it. So for 26 years, it has sat essentially undeveloped. So that is something that has to take into consideration for the city is, does the city want to provide some type of financial incentive to try to spur development? Whether that would be for the original plat that is 18 or essentially what has kind of been proposed by the developer is to look at replating the subdivision to have 12 single-family homes ranging from two larger lots and 10 smaller single-family lots between roughly eight, 8,000 and 8,100 square feet each. The subdivision then would also have a proposed pocket neighborhood, which potentially would house a total of 34 pocket style homes. Now, obviously that is something where as with any financial agreement, it moves through a step. So the first step is to determine whether or not the city is willing to provide some form of an incentive. With that is the caveat that in that subdivision agreement, there has to be a formal development agreement that is reached. With that development agreement is the requirement then where we get down basically into the nuts and bolts. That is the question of how many homes are going to be allowed to be done? What potentially can those homes need to look like? What are the sidewalks that are going to be on there? What are the street whiffs? What are the, you know, amount of parking? All of that water and sewer that all goes into that development agreement. So those are things obviously that we have discussed have been legitimate concerns that have been brought up by community members in regards to what that's going to be. And obviously have been discussions that we continue to have with the developer. So those are all parts of the kind of this process, you know, one step is to determine whether or not the city is willing to. So those are all parts of the kind of this process, you know, one step is to determine whether or not the city is willing to provide some form of an incentive. That really is one of the things that we're kind of discussing first. So before we can go into any type of a development agreement conversation or get into the nuts and bolts of what exactly development is going to look like, we have to decide as a community if we're going to be willing to provide some form of a reimbursement for that final product. So obviously the city has done this in the past. Typically, there has been a 25% incentive that has been given to developers. Within your packet, there's a couple of different versions that you have seen, and we've talked about that where you know, the provider, the developer, the owner of the lot basically completes the project. Upon completion, they get a 25% reimbursement typically that has been tied to infrastructure. That's what we're potentially looking at with this is our incentive that would be given if chosen would be tied towards roads, improvements, water, sidewalk, all of those things. Obviously, one of the questions that has kind of come up, which has been the big debate within the housing study has been in order to spur development, potentially you may have to go higher than 25%. So as you can see in the proposed subdivision reimbursement agreement you have been given, there's the potential for that to occur. It starts with a baseline of 25%. And then as we would get to the finalized site plan, which then would determine the exact number of homes that would be on here, whether that would be the original 18, a replating within the zoning code that would allow for lots to be done at 8,000 square feet. Or a further discussion of some type of a mixed use, which would have some type of a pocket style, mixed housing. That potentially the question that is in that agreement is to look at if that is done within a certain amount of years, it would increase the ability for the developer to receive an incentive. So as you've seen in the draft agreement, it starts at 25%, goes to 35%. If it's completed within about a four to five year timeline, there's the potential for a 45% reimbursement. Again, those are all things that are kind of negotiable when we're talking about the agreement. So that is what actually will be on the next council agenda is the plan to actually have that draft agreement. It was completed by the attorney. Unfortunately, it was not able to be put into the packet, but it will be in the next one. So again, from a budgetary fiscal impact standpoint, you know, we have worked with the engineers to look at what the potential infrastructure costs could be. They come in at about $1.3 million to do all the roads, water, sewer, and everything that needs to be done. So just to kind of give a reference point for an incentive, a 25% reimbursement on that would equate to about $337,500. Typically, how that is tied to is it's based on occupancy permits. So when the developer creates a home and it is finalized, there then is a reimbursement amount that is given. And then depending on the amount of homes that they're able to do, that has been agreed upon by all parties. If it's done within the timeframes of the dates that have been set, it increases the amount of incentive that potentially is done on those homes. So again, the recommendation that we're kind of looking at tonight is obviously the city of Platteville completed a housing study needs assessment in 2019. Within that study was the objective for the city of Platteville to create mixed housing types, smaller lot residential districts, create an offsite and onsite improvement grant loan program to encourage housing development construction, encourage housing construction through site preparation assistance, and proactively work with developers and investors to building identified housing projects on targeted properties. So again, as we've talked about, as, as a community, as a city, there are not very many platted subdivisions that are empty. This is one of those. There are a couple within the community that we have targeted as a city to try to look at and determine if, when they were platted, if that still makes sense. Because again, whenever you do a subdivision, you get one chance. So that's something that obviously you need to consider is it has to be able to do a bunch of things. It needs to blend into what is existing there. It needs to make sense. It needs to look into all of those concerns. And that's pretty much what we're trying to look at, look at doing. So again, with this development, it definitely does check a lot of those boxes. It is a new developer that is willing to look into investing in this community. It is definitely something where as we have all talked about, we continue to hear about housing and how that is concerned for people that are looking for housing and affordable housing. That definitely does not fall into the gamut of low income. That is a question of the definition of again, trying to find homes that are in a certain price point that are not, you're talking 350 to 400,000, but again, are not below 200,000. So it's trying to find that happy medium of looking into the market and determining what makes sense. So again, you know, the city staff would recommend looking at definitely entering into a finance agreement with the developer. And the finance agreement would then create the framework to establish the city of Platteville is willing to partner with this development in the completion of a new subdivision. But then the finance agreement would then obviously require the developer to enter into development agreement and obtain approval for a planned unit development, which would require an official site plan approval in which further discussions about lot sizes, building requirements, sidewalks, parking and landscaping would have to be determined in order to be approved. So again, the common council did authorize city staff to work with the city attorney on the creation of a subdivision reimbursement document. You now have that, that will be included in obviously the next packet. So I would definitely encourage all of you to review that proposed financial agreement. Let me know, obviously, if you have any questions, and I will refer those back to the city attorney for the review. And then that would be back on the agenda at September 14th, essentially as a potential action item if the council would deem to do so, to then kind of move into the next steps, which essentially would be the development agreement process, which then would determine kind of the next steps of housing, what would go in there, et cetera. So I know the developer is here tonight, so I'm going to turn it over to Mike to allow him to kind of present the vision of what he's looking at doing, and then we'll go from there.
I have a question.
Yes.
This document has 32 roughly pages. Did the public get to see it?
I couldn't hear you Ken, I'm sorry.
The question, Mike, was this packet that we got tonight that has, I think it's up on the it's a PowerPoint, I think that's on a has this been previously presented to anyone?
Just to you guys, but this is a updated version of it that we did since the last meeting. So.
Okay, so this has not, this has not been distributed in the public forum?
No, not yet.
Okay.
No, it's more or less just an updated one of the way we did last time. We had some technical issues last time, so we just updated it.
Yeah. So what we do with those is typically after the meeting, we will request that information from Mike and actually have that included in the packet. So if anybody in the public wants to view what was presented at tonight's meeting, it'll be included in the actual packet information that goes out.
You guys actually already have it. It's on the zip drive.
Yep.
So Ken, it'll be added to our website in our packet. So people will be able to see it there. Okay. Mike, you.
Yes.
Did you give a copy to all the council?
Yes. So every single council member has a copy of that document. So your homework is essentially to review that. And as well, that will be something that will be added to the packet because unfortunately it was not completed by the attorney in time to be put into the packet. But same thing for the community, they will have an opportunity to have that in the packet to be reviewed if they have any questions whatsoever when that comes up at the next meeting.
Okay.
Small changes. Okay.
Okay. Mike, please introduce yourself and proceed then.
You're Michael Stroetz, 295 Bailey Avenue, Platteville, Wisconsin. Okay, so we are once here again, once here again to talk about the Golden Heights Phase Three subdivision. I know as the council, we've discussed it many times in closed session. I've talked about it with city staff as Adam said, and I see some smiling faces and some unsmiling faces that were at the neighborhood meeting last Thursday. So I'm going to go through and kind of hit over some of the stuff that we couldn't hit on last time we met as a result of some technology issues. And then I will open it up to any questions the council has. I'm sure there's some people here to speak, and then I will get an opportunity to, I'm sure, speak again. So what we're talking about today is the Golden Heights Phase Three subdivision, hopefully everybody can see that. And again, as Adam said, tonight's discussion is about the, the finance agreement, the developer agreement, not as so much about what specifically is going to be done up there. I know we've talked about that. I know there's a plan in place and a plan that we're looking at moving forward with, but the focus tonight is essentially talking about the roads, though I am able to answer some of those other questions and I did come up with some responses to certain questions that were last time in regards to floor plans, which I believe are in your packet, Barb. Isaac, we do have some answers for you in regards to distance between properties and proposed update to the site plan. So one of the things I want to focus on is this is not going to be a trailer park, a tiny home community, college rental housing, or low income. I think some people got a misconception of what we were looking at doing there. So I want to make sure to reassure that is not what we're doing and that is not our intent. So again, just doing a little bit of repeating Adam, but it's kind of how the presentation is set up, so it'll throw me off if I don't. The original development was started in the late 80s and early 90s, beginning on Pioneer Road. It was developed over approximately 30 year period. It is within the Platteville city limits. It was originally planned based on market conditions at the time. So late 80s, early 90s, large half acre lots, large homes, that was the thing. Land was cheaper at the time, and it was just the way the developments were done. However, the market has changed some since then, and that's one of the contributing factors as Adam touched on, why this has not been developed in the last 30 years. So from a familiarity standpoint, most people here, I'm sure know where it is, but here's old 151 and Country Kitchen. We're right there. Oops. That is the aerial shot of it right there. That is, if you can see that, unfortunately, it's from Google Earth. That is how it's plotted. You can see the lot lines and the road that would go in there as it's plotted. It would be an extension of Pioneer Road and Ready Drive. And then a road proposed called DeLorean Drive that would exit to the west. Ready Drive would then exit to the south. Okay, so more or less, who am I and why am I doing this? Well, I'm the son of the, one of the original developers. ONS Investments in conjunction with East McCarrick did most of the houses out there. I'm a local resident who is invested in Platteville in other ways, and I want Platteville to succeed. I do have a connection to the neighborhood. I grew up in the neighborhood. I actually helped build some of the homes out there. And you know, I'm someone from the community that wants to develop into the community. Most of the times when you're dealing with a developer, they're from outside of the community. I'm looking at somebody to develop within the community and from the community. So what is, I'm kind of hitting on the housing study here. What are some of the barriers of entry to Platteville and how did we get here? Well, there's a lack of current housing inventory on the market. So typically what you're seeing is cheaper severely maintenance deprived, older homes needing updates. I put down, I think, shag carpet and paneling that are going anywhere from 80,000, 120,000 and up. And a lot of those prices in the current market environment are actually probably overly inflated and are going for more than what they should, considering maybe their age or their deferred maintenance. There are larger, more traditional homes on the market, few and far in between. Typically, they sell, but they, you know, take a while to sell. They don't typically go under contract immediately and sell. Middle of the road housing, which we are mostly talking about here is rare, and it typically was under contract almost immediately when it's put on the market. And available lots for building are typically sitting not sold right now because they're too expensive. Typically lots that are sitting at a half acre, $50,000, $60,000 plus. That's a barrier to entry for most people that are looking to build in the Platteville community, not for everybody, but for most, and that's why they don't sell overly quick. Platteville typically has a higher property tax rate than neighboring communities and townships, and that makes growth outside of the city a little bit more attractive. I'm sure that's why one of the reasons the city study was done. The Platteville Township, which is north of the golf course, communities like Belmont, Cuba City, Hazel Green, Benton and Keeler have all started doing developments and doing growth and have been very successful with them. If you've driven through any of them. Mostly it's because they're, it's cheaper to build, they're smaller lots, and taxes are a little bit more reasonable. Some of those communities have provided incentives, and it's just a cheaper cost of living, but most of the people, people that live in those communities do use the amenities provided by Platteville. So you know, your Walmarts, your Menards, your restaurants, stuff like that. We have limited growth in the city in certain directions. I mean, to the north, we're kind of pinned in by the golf course of the township. To the east, we are going to hit the highway, even though there is a development out there. To the west, there is some growth potential, but I think that subdivision out there is a ways from being in a position where it could be planted and used. And then to the south, you have us. Current market environment also has higher building costs. If anybody follows the market, it's a little bit more expensive to build right now, though a lot of those costs are looking to come down. So with it being more expensive, larger lots, larger homes, more expensive to build. And then larger lots in this location are generally to platform drive up the cost because it just makes, makes development not feasible. Okay, so Platteville does need middle of the road housing as Adam touched on, that's the 200, just shy of $300,000 range. That's basically figured by the median income is right around 60,000 in the city of Platteville. That basically affords a house in that price range. This is backed up by the 2019 housing study. Part of the city of Platteville and city council strategic plan, which I know Adam touched on. And any local expert in the real estate market, unless you can find me one, will tell you that Platteville does need growth. By doing this, it's going to fuel property tax growth, which provides all the amenities that we love within the city. It better allows for property taxes that we all already pay, not to get overly increased, hopefully to flatline, or at least not have the increase that we've seen over the last several years. I wrote Main Street property there. My wife and I own a commercial building in downtown Platteville. We've seen the property taxes basically double over the past four years. And by increasing property taxes, that allows the city to then provide more parks programs and hopefully incentivize restaurants and economic development. I know the, it was brought up last time, I think by councilman Isaac, that we're, the city's always joked about getting an Applebee's. And everybody says, oh, I heard we're going to get an Applebee's, and that's been the thing for like 30 years. Restaurants like that don't look at communities like ours until we get growth in population and growth in traffic count. So ways to combat the current environment. We're talking a partnership between the city here, which is part of their strategic plan. We want to create a development with smaller lots to look to keep lock costs down, but still provide a nice community. A smaller housing footprint allows the cost per square foot to be minimized. And we're going to try to use concepts that have been used in other communities that are either larger than Platteville or similar in size to Platteville. So we don't want to reinvent the wheel here. It's something that's been successful. We think it's going to be very applicable for the city of Platteville. And that is essentially a pocket neighborhood or what's called a blended pocket neighborhood. Now, what a pocket neighborhood is, small development of houses, nicer homes that are encouraged neighborly interaction and structured around green spaces and common area spaces. I know green spaces are one of the hot items that the city is looking at with development. This is definitely a highlight that it's used in these kind of developments. There's kind of a rendering of what one looks like. So why do people, why do communities like them? Will they use up and maximize space efficiently? Again, Adam mentioned that there is limited space in the city right now. This is a great way to maximize that space. They typically are well kept through HOAs and tend to increase property values statistically in neighborhoods they go into. And there is less maintenance and care because they would have an HOA. This one would be no different. It's a better use of the lots and areas using, you know, a common phrase of infill development, which is mentioned in the city study. This is kind of a version of infill development that a lot of cities use. In my opinion, it's a better alternative to duplexes or multifamily, which would solve the same problem, but not look as neighborhood-y or fit with a neighborhood as well as single family homes. And they're proven success in other markets, large metro areas, you know, Seattle, Denver, use them, median markets, they're in Madison and Middleton. And if you even want to use a comparable market to Platteville, Grinnell, Iowa has one very similar. These are some pictures that we pulled from different consulting sites that we've used in setting this up. Again, they have green spaces, they're very well built homes, large front porches, lots of landscaping and levels to maintain privacy, but still be close knit with your neighbors. Again, focusing on front porches, gardens, et cetera. So why do typically homeowners like them? Well, they encourage a neighborhood environment. They drive down some of the costs to get into housing. They appeal to a larger demographic. Their options that are affordable for young professionals, first time home buyers and people looking to downsize, such as retirees. HOAs in this case will take care of maintenance and upkeep, making the, keeping the neighborhood well kept, maintained and beautiful. And then we, as most of them have, will have a very nice landscaping, walking trails and plenty of green space, which I know is something very important for some of the city council members. Why is this good for Platteville? Well, they're considered safe neighborhoods. They address the housing shortage. They provide the green space and beautification that's being looked for, and it maximizes the use of an existing neighborhood. And of course, it adds additional property tax to the city of Platteville, which is part of the city strategic plan. Couple different variations here. I'm kind of trying to show some stuff before we get into the site plan. This is an aerial view from an example of a pocket or blended pocket neighborhood. So the housing clusters are what's in the red. The streets are in the blue. The walkways are in the light blue. So again, they're just smaller neighborhoods, very nice homes that are just more compact. This is a blended pocket neighborhood slash small neighborhood. This actually is kind of similar to what we're looking at doing out on Golden Heights Phase Three. You have the pocket home clusters such as those. You have houses facing the street like a typical neighborhood. And then you have streets and access lanes. So this has been the much talked about site plan that was provided. One of the things I want to stress about this is this site plan right here was more or less provided to the city employees in the city council as a demonstration by our engineer of how we wanted to potentially move the road and change the road and the outlets. How we wanted to address lots one through 10 that are adjacent to Matador Drive lots. And what we are proposing as far as the planned urban development of the pocket style cottage homes in Lot 11. And this was mostly done as a density analysis. So we were trying to show the city employees and the city council members. If we really wanted to do higher density with this types of homes, this is what we could get in there, leaving about 20 feet or so between each one of the homes. Now, I'm not saying that we're going to do that. I'm not saying that this is the finalized site plan. It is not. It is not, but some version of what we have on there in Lot Eleven, which is right here, we are looking to do. And that's going to be more determined as we get into the development phases and we get the consultants and engineers involved. I'm going to go through a little bit quick and then I'm going to jump back to this to address some of the items. Adam, you said that we're going to come up, so I'll do that here in a second. So essentially, what are we doing compared to how it sits? Well. We're going to move the street A north. We're going to put a gentle curve on it and eliminate the outlet to the west. We are still going to have ready drive outlet to the south if the city ever annexed the land to the south and looked to increase in size. Lots one through ten that are adjacent to the current homes on Matador Drive are just going to be made a bit smaller, but still residential lots. The goal for the homes on those lots would be very similar to what's in the neighborhood. We tend to like more of a craftsman feel to the home, but it would be very similar to what the style is in the neighborhood. Those lots have the ability to put larger homes in the pocket style homes on them, so they could be two thousand to three thousand square foot homes and with finished basements even bigger, depending on the floor plans that we decide to use. Again, that would run through lots one through ten. Lot thirteen, I think at this point, we're looking at selling as it is. It is currently for sale. Lot twelve, the size of lot twelve is basically because we removed the outlet road there. We are considering either doing an additional different version of kind of a blended neighborhood in there. Or we may split that lot up into one, two, or I'm sorry, two or three different lots that would be just similar to kind of lot thirteen for sale. Phase one of the development would be lot one through lot ten here. Lot thirteen and twelve. And this row of homes right here, which would enter onto street A. We would then do a phase two of the project when most of this is done, where Ready Drive would be extended. There would then be a private drive that runs along the south of the property. That's mainly due that there's a federal utility easement there, so you can't build on it. So the best thing to do is to put a road in. We would run the low road down to the, well, we have a cul-de-sac on here, but I believe that our plan now is, and the plan is not updated, so we will get an updated site plan for you, Isaac. And well, I think we're going to run it all the way around as a loop. This would be a private drive here, put in by us as a developer and maintained by us as the developer. We would then look to put these homes in here as part of that. Outlot one here, we have to, according to Howard, have a place for the water to go. So the water's going to drain into outlet one because that's naturally how the land drains over there. Typically, when developers do drainage ponds, I think Walmart, it's just limestone filled, weeded over gated around thing that water can dump into. If you look outside the Walmart parking lot. We are not looking to do that here. We actually want to make this a beautification part of the neighborhood. We want to do it as a wet pond with a water feature. Do you have landscaping around it and look to do a walking trail around it that can be accessed from a sidewalk that will run along the road that'll come up here that can be used by everybody? We are proposing that we would hang on to that as the developer and maintain it throughout the development process. And then at some point in a future date, either dedicate it back to the homeowners association that would be only for Lot Eleven. Or if the city wanted to consider it a park, we would consider dedicating it to the city at that time where the city would call it a park. There has been discussion on sidewalks, green space and walking trails. So according to, it seems like the new flavor, the city is very into sidewalks right now, which we have no problem with. We will look to put sidewalks along lots one through ten and the frontage of these pocket neighborhoods here. And we'll just have to find a common sense place to get in the sidewalk. As far as the appeal of pocket neighborhoods is they have lots of green space. This area right here would be common area, green space that would be maintained by the HOA and be able to use by everyone. We would have a trail or a walking path that walks in front of all the homes, all the way around as a rectangle. Sometimes when you see these done, they have community centers, gazebos, stuff like that in there. There will also be sidewalk, excuse me, or along the private drive that goes all the way around to the neighborhood. And then at some point, we will bring, when we bring Ready Drive south here, it will dead end here again to exit to the south if this ever decided to grow above and beyond that. We've been asked a couple of, to bring a couple of examples of styles of homes that we look to put up there and different concepts that we thought of. So I'm going to run through some of that stuff quick. Hopefully I'm not boring everybody to death. So we already went through what we're going to do here. So like, the reason I brought this is nobody knows who this is and hopefully it's not your home. If it is, I feel bad. This is the duplexes that are off the back of the country club on the back nine that are going out of town. This is one concept we've looked at from a style standpoint that we've talked about putting here. Or we've even talked about putting here. I'm not saying we are not going to do that, but we are looking at doing something that again is more traditional, kind of gives that more of a housing feel. But again, still looking to take really good care of the density and what we want to do with the neighborhood. We just kind of borrowed some marketing material from some of the companies that we're doing at consulting with. This is again, just an aerial view of a demonstration of a pocket neighborhood. These are some examples of different floor plans and designs that we are looking at using. Council members should have several of those different floor plans in their packet. Also, these websites can be readily available for anybody to go look at. I'm not saying we're going to do these specific floor plans, but we're going to do floor plans very similar and themed to these. So like this is a fourteen hundred square foot house. It's got a garage on it. It's considered a smaller of the type, but it does have two bedrooms, bath, very well done, very maintained, does have a garage. This would be, I forget the name, I think if they call it the Madison. This one is somewhere around seventeen hundred square feet. It does have multiple bedrooms, two car garage. Again, that is the style. Oops. And then this one is just shy of two thousand square feet. Again, two car garage, double layer, very nice layout in the home. These again will have higher end finishes, so you know, stainless steel appliances, higher end wood floors, big front porches, stuff like that to give them a very nice appeal to them and definitely feel higher end. They just won't be to the square footage footprint that, you know, you typically see, you know, three thousand square foot plus homes. Now, a lot of them will have unfinished basement, so there will be the opportunity for the homeowner to finish the basement if they so desire. We have had some discussion about depending on cost with them and what the desire is from the market of possibly doing something that is slab on grade. I don't know if we're going to do that, that'll again, get into more of the planning part of the process. Again, installation of infrastructure, Adam touched on it's about one point three million to put the infrastructure in. If we're going to do it as it's as it's proposed there. We look to do it again on two phases. You know, I'm looking at this as an investment in the community. The city does get a return on its investment through property taxes. So by growth coming in, the city does make its money back. That's that money just coming to us. And it's, in my opinion, a great public relations opportunity to show we're using the real estate study and sticking to our own strategic plan. You okay, so kind of finishing up here. So why partner with us as the developer? Again, we're local, we've invested in the community, we have other business interests in the community. We have the property ready and waiting. We have, our engineer is actually a native to Platteville and is excited to actually be involved in this process. Again, we want to invest in living in the community versus an outside developer. I've said in the meeting that we had last week, and I mean it, I will live in this neighborhood. I will move to this neighborhood. I'm going to put my money where my mouth is. For me, this is a little bit of a family legacy project that I'm looking to maybe finish the last phase that my dad did start. Again, we're looking to address the housing concerns of Platteville, and this will leave options for future development beyond the neighborhood by the outlet roads that we're leaving in. And again, you know, I'm putting skin in the game, whether it's moving into the neighborhood or bringing a new concept or doing whatever I can. I believe in it enough that I'm here talking to all of you folks. I look at this again as a, you know, win, win, win for the city. We're taking advantage of what the housing study says and trying to accommodate. We're trying to work with the neighborhood to the best of our ability to blend the neighborhood out and do something that's not going to affect the neighborhood, at least in my opinion. And do something that hopefully we don't lose money on. As far as the city partnering with us, this is the city investing in itself. Again, going to provide a return on investment for the city. And this is the concept that we, we will continue to flush out through the development phase. I know that some of the council members have different comments and stuff that they'd like to see, same with the city staff, even from the neighborhood. As I said in the meeting last Thursday, if you were there, I'm willing to listen to anything, take input. I can't promise I'll do it, but I'm very open to that. And whether you wanted to meet with me on a private setting in this public setting or just over the phone. With that being said, I think I have covered everything. Does anybody on the council have questions?
Okay, council member questions. Jason, any questions?
I think one question, and maybe we'll be going over it, but that I've been getting is traffic flow. Like, how is that going to work? Is there going to be increased traffic flow? I know that that's been brought up a few times.
Well, go ahead, Adam, do you want to? No, I'm just adding any, anything to a subdivision is going to, of course, of course, increase traffic flow. You know, has there been a study done on the increase of the traffic flow? There hasn't been, at least to my knowledge. There wasn't when the phase before that was done. And I'm sure there wasn't when the phase before that was done, all the way back to when I think we were the first house out there. There wasn't any traffic studies done. There are at least three outlets that I'm aware of that get you out of that neighborhood. And we're not looking at doing such high density housing that we're looking at going like seven story apartment buildings all the way through the field concrete jungle. So I would think the personally, again, I'm not backing it up on anything because I have not done a traffic study, that it would be minimal to the community. And I believe in several of the meetings we've had, Adam, we've talked to Howard in regards to that, and I think we're looking at it as almost nominal.
Yeah, I mean, it's certainly something as we get into kind of the nuts and bolts of what is that? You know, what is the amount of homes that is acceptable there? It's something that we always look at. We look at that with our engineers, that's going to be their engineer's responsibility to look at the majority of traffic flow because it is a legitimate concern.
Yeah, and it's something that we would have done as far as part as the planning process. So when we go into planning commission, or probably before that, probably doing closed session or whatever we'd call it, those would be brought up. And if there was concerns by city staff or, you know, Adam is reading you guys on the council and saying, you know, they're, they're not going to like X. You know, we'd look to address that ahead of time because that's part of the discussion that we're having.
That was the only one that I have right now.
Ready? No questions. Ken?
Width of streets and parking on streets. Did you hear my question?
Width of street is what he said. W I D.
Width of streets.
Width of street and parking on streets. That's the development.
There will be parking on streets, but however, there will be in, again, the site plan that was up there, probably for sure isn't going to be the finalized site plan. There, there is going to be two car garages associated with the properties that will be room in the driveways as we're going to look to move those a little bit to have parking in there. There will be parking on the streets because there is parking on the streets all over up there. I think Howard, when we talked, we, what did we skinny the street down to? Sixty feet?
No, I mean, the right of way will be still pretty wide, but the actual street widths will be narrower than what's up there right now. What's up there right now is thirty six feet between the curbs, you know, and it'll probably be thirty to thirty two. We'll have to look at that. The, the streets that are in that subdivision are way too wide. People are, people can drive way too fast through those subdivisions. And we need to skinny the streets up to slow traffic down.
Ken, other questions?
What are these kind?
Len?
What would be your anticipated timeline on the development? Even breaking it down in phases like?
Well, it depends on how fast you guys want to fold. It would be as soon as we had approval through the development deal, then we can work a budget out for how we want to do things and start the engineers working on stuff, doing site plans. There's going to have to be some reserving done, etc. When that is all done, I would anticipate maybe shortly after the first of the year would be approved by the city. Once it's approved by the city, then we can solicit bids for the work because we know what we're working with at that point. Once the bids match up the budget or we make amendments with the budget with that, then it would be just the finalization of setting the schedule for getting at least the road put in. I would see, you know, twelve, eighteen months, you know, up to twenty four months, depending on the availability of contractors and how the seasons work with us to get the road, the curb and the gutter in. We would be coming right in behind that with starting the development and then based on the incentive of the development would be the speed that we'd come at. We'd look to go at it as fast as we could, provided market conditions, don't do anything to slow us down.
It happening within the next five, ten years.
Oh, absolutely. I think part of the incentive that's in the, the development agreement that you have is if we get a lot done in the five years from when the road is done, that's more beneficial to us. That's definitely a goal that we're looking at. If we're looking to go twenty five years, it actually wouldn't be as smart of an investment and we'd probably look to leave the lots as they sit. But again, you wouldn't get your return back maybe for at least that period of time. So it just wouldn't be a smart use of money.
Isaac?
I guess my first thing, so I've asked multiple times for a better layout of the property.
Yep, and Yep, to answer that, we are, the engineers working up a new one. We hope to have that for the September fourth meeting that show the, the amended layout to what's in the lot eleven there. And the distance between the houses and what we're going to try to put in there. We will need some input from the city and from the city employees in regards to density. It seems that some seem in favor of some higher density while others want to see a lot more green space and space between the homes. That's kind of up for negotiation of what you guys want to see, probably more of the planning phase portion of this. But if that's something that needs to be ironed out before we get into that, we can definitely do that. Right now, the site you plan you have in front of you, I think the houses are approximately twenty feet apart.
Well, for me, I would hunt this, I would want the density worked out before we went to the planning. So, and I'll still, in my opinion, I think seventeen houses in each row is too many. And now all of a sudden, you're going to say you possibly going to take lot thirteen, which was going to be your personal lot. Now move it down to two to three houses or more. So now you're going to add, you know, three possibly more houses just on that one there. So now we're taking it up, we'll just say just basic three. So now you're taking it up to forty nine houses right there. So Ken's issue that I have with the parking or I agree with Ken on the parking is. And I do agree with, the Howard, the streets are too wide, should be narrowed down. But if all of a sudden you're starting to add, you know, forty six, forty nine houses, you're, you know, given the national average of one point eight eight cars per household, so we're rounded up to two. You've got ninety two vehicles that you want to put in that little neighborhood, and that's a lot of cars. As for the, I have a question on your retention bond. You said you're going to make it a wet pond with the water feature. You get a year like this year, even last year. How are you going to keep that pond wet?
Are we, we're going to have water and run to the pond that we're going to put in?
Of which source?
What's that?
By way of which?
We'll have a meter put in that is on that particular lot that is maintained by us as a developer. So I will be eating that cost in order to keep it full. Just like we'll have an outlet lot if it overflows that goes into a dry pit, so it doesn't flood anything.
Can be a city water fed pond.
Sure. Unless you guys object to that.
So I'll just keep them down to this here. So, so another thing that we've asked for is communities the size of Platteville or roughly the size of Platteville that have had something like you want to do here. And the one that you give me in Indiana.
I gave you one in Iowa.
The one in Iowa as well, but the one in packets, Indiana here. So the one in Iowa is, I believe was eight properties total. I'm running around one block and not forty four. So to me, that would not be a comparable, comparable type of program what you're doing here. And if we went based on what I've seen down there in the pictures, again, I would not approve this because those are pretty basic, bare bones, straight homes. Going back to my lot size, the reason I say this, the planning commission, we just went through and redid minimum lot sizes in town. So dropping down to seventy feet of frontage with eight thousand square feet total lot size as a minimum. What would be the objection of doing that? Because to me, that would be kind of a compromise between the bigger lots and this, you've got somewhat similar lots that you got one through ten. And would probably break it down into, you know, maybe twelve, maybe ten houses on each row and not so close, so.
At this point, I don't want to say I have an objection against it. Again, that's going to be how the math flushes out.
So I guess this time, my biggest thing is I want to see a more developed plan than what we have here before. I would commit to either way on something like this.
I guess I would need to know then probably from the council through the, the city staff, how detailed of a plan that we need. Because then we're going to have to engage the engineer and try to hit timelines appropriately.
Well, for me, it would be actual street wood sizes, lot sizes, where the sidewalks can be, where the trails are going to be. A dimension of the pond, lot thirteen, if you're going to have that broken down into one lot or two or three lots or another pocket neighborhood. Nice, you're going to change the street from a cul-de-sac to a through street, so I'd want to see that. You get to start for you, six, seven items, so.
Okay, so, but are you saying to me that if I do those six or seven items, then you would vote? How?
It's a vote, either way. I'm saying to give me some way to look at it on how I would vote.
Okay, so I think what I'm hearing, what I'm hearing from Isaac is he needs more detail and more, and not just a rough concept.
And then we can start talking about, well, maybe the density is too high because the widths aren't wide enough. And then we can say, well, well, now we need a sidewalk here, don't need one. And to be fair with you, you talk about sidewalks and I'm on record as I'm not a fan of sidewalks in the neighborhood. So if you didn't do one, it wouldn't bother me because there's not one of there anyways. But means you mentioned it in the code or the ordinance states there has to be one. I want to see what they're going to be at, so.
Put them in according to code and how the ordinance wants them in to put them in, at least for how they are along the road there, unless there's an exception made through the P U D. Where you weren't required at one side of the street or the other, because the neighborhood does not have them sidewalks already up there. As far as the site plan goes, I mean, we can, I, I guess I need to know to what level of detail other than I get you listed your five or six bullet points there. We need to go so we don't kind of start an everlasting gobstopper of we just keep asking for things and providing things and asking for things and providing things. I mean, are those the five or six things that are needed so that that will give you the idea of what you're looking for in order to move this on?
I think those six things, I think have pretty much been the items of what everybody's asked for multiple times here. And then I think we could all move on from that point, so.
Okay, now, just. Okay, now, just one more quick response and then we can move forward. Just so I have talked, spoken with, um, you know, Adam and the city staff and, you know, we're, we're trying to provide those things, but yet trying to figure out at what point that we want to provide those things. I guess from our conversations, I've looked at that as more of the actual planning process when we have to go in front of the planning commission. Now, I, I get that that's something you want, and I have no problem trying to provide that more detail. Again, that's an additional cost invested into a project that. I'm not sure which side of the fence you sit on, and I have no problem going to a point to do that. But again, I think that's more of the planning phase than it is this phase. I'm not saying I'm not going to provide it. I'm just saying. I, I, I guess I need to know where the line is drawn for what you need so I can provide that.
I'll tell you. So I want to see something that actually has the streets in there, like you point on doing. You've taken the cul-de-sac out. And you've said you're going to make it a through street now. I'd like to see that. I'd like to see what the width of that street is going to be. I want to see what the lot.
Well, that, that would be a private drive. Okay, I got you. Yep.
Same thing. And what the, what the driveway is going to be. Sidewalks, again, you know, I know they're going to fluctuate a foot or two here or there, but I want to see where the sidewalks can be at. Um, lot 13 first. Sorry.
Lot 12.
12, sorry, my site's bad. Uh, whether that's going to stay as one lot or to be broken down into two or three or even more. Um, the private pass. On there. So.
Okay, um, I, but I'm sorry.
So Adam, you have. Isaac's concerns or details and you guys can work that out. But, okay. Then, uh, I do have several people who have uh, registered to speak. And so I really do want to move on with that portion. Of this agenda because several people are in the audience.
Nope, I understand.
And uh, just to uh, let people who speak know. When you speak, you're speaking to the council. So this is not an opportunity to have a discussion with Mike. All right. So you need, if you want to have a discussion with Mike, you need to. Find, you know, find an appointment and have a discussion with Mike. This is an opportunity for you to express your feelings to the council and any questions you might have to the council. But this is not a round table and we aren't going to be necessary. I would say we won't be responding and saying yes, no, or whatever. So uh, Adam and uh, Candace will make a recording. We all make our notes too. If we need clarification on an item, we might ask it. But again, this is not like a round table discussion. So uh, the first person I have had or that's on my stack here is Chuck Rundy from 615 Pioneer Road. Would like to speak.
Chuck Rundy, 615 Pioneer Road. I uh, live just a couple of blocks north of the proposed uh, division. Um. Now knowing what the, what Barb has laid out. One of my concerns in looking at these original plan that was sent out was density. And I think. We got that Isaac has. Got uh, Mike working on that. So that answered a lot of my question. I do uh, um, have to compliment both the city and the council. We're trying to come up with some. Areas to expand housing in Plattville. We all know it's needed. We want to grow. Um, so I certainly do compliment the, the city and the. In that direction. It was mentioned earlier about the neighborhood. And the density relates to that. I didn't count the number of houses up there right now. But if you add the four, uh, or excuse me, the 10. It was a 10. Uh. Lots plus the 34. Uh, pocket homes. We've got 44 additional. Units and there's not that many more units in that whole subdivision up there. So. Again, it relates to Mike's point about density. Number of cars, traffic, safety, so on, so on. So. I would certainly encourage both the uh, uh, council and the city to look at safety factors as number one. Right now, there are more and more. Uh, walkers, joggers, bikers in that neighborhood. And as was mentioned earlier, there are no sidewalks up there right now. So they're walking in the streets and biking in the streets and so forth. So um, density is the big issue. Thank you.
Give it to us. Okay, I also have Linda Witts. At the ITZ, uh, 1010 Cadillac Drive. Linda?
And I understand pocket homes. But I think. I would never buy one. This has been a small city. People are moving. Not like density or closeness. Also. I have called the police telling them that we have. More children in our neighborhood. And we have college people driving down ready road. Very fast. They denied putting up a sign. Or anything. To designate. The minimum amount they can speed. When you have. Three year olds, four year olds. And 10 year olds because they're out there. You have got to be able to call the police. And not be denied. Um. When you say parking on a street. That is very complicated to me. If with two cars, average two cars. If you have that many homes. With two people in it. And perhaps a child. You think of the density which he mentioned. He also stated that there was no development within the last 20 years. And I beg to differ on that because I used to live. Where you could just see a field. Now there are nice homes. That is a beautiful subdivision. Beautiful. People buy homes there. They don't care about the taxes. I mean, they know that they're high. And I just, I don't want to see this city become, this town become a big city. I mean. I know you need to make more money. But. You know, cramming everybody together and having uh, cars. Out. On, on the road. That's not, that's not nice. You don't have a great big front yard as you can see. And you also don't have much in back. We do not know what the price of the homes are going to be. We do not have any. Kind of information of the size of the home. Is it going to be two story, one story? They have a basement. Uh, what's an average cost? What is a pocket home going to cost? And how much can you tax? There is so many considerations. And when I moved back here, I was hoping to hope to have a home. Right where I am now. In that subdivision. Because. It's eerie. It, it, you can sit out in your backyard. You can see your neighbors. You don't have. Four, oh, not four, five kids running around all the time. You put all those people. In there, you're going to have traffic. You're not going to get the big professors. Who live there now. Because they're not going to buy there. They want. Some room. That's why you move to a little city. Little town. And you want a nice house. How much, what can you get for $200? 220, what? 200. Nowadays. I mean, when I moved here. Uh. Every time we moved, we always paid more for a house. And we did so here. And I know my house has gone up in value. But. These people can, you know, the ones that want these little homes. They don't want to spend 200,000. They can't, most of them. So. Basically, I think it is not a good idea. Uh. I understand. That they will have sewers, water and everything. Is that already into your planning when you bought a bond? Was that thinking about developments?
The bond, the bond issues we approved tonight were for expenses we have incurred. Or are the bonds that we approved tonight are for expenses that we have incurred this year. It's for our current budget. So thank you for your comments.
Okay.
And uh, the next person who's uh, asked to speak is Christopher Stambaugh. Uh, 1155 Cadillac Drive.
Hey, thank you all for your service today. Um, we've heard a little bit about Pocket Paradise tonight. Uh, I did some independent research. Uh, these uh, appear to be nice. They make sense in certain types of areas. High density. Urban areas mostly. That's why you don't see many examples in towns like ours. Rust belt areas that need an urban renaissance, areas around, for example, like South Bend. Uh, Indiana by Notre Dame, areas where you're going to have alumni come back, that, those kinds of things. They make a lot of sense. We all want to see Plattville grow. Um. Uh. We want to see development for Plattville. Okay. Um, I would personally support. Uh, additional finance going into uh, the, that area so that. Homes of the same size. As we have can get there more easily. If that's a pathway to do that, you all should do that. Okay, that's good for this community. You will have the right type of neighborhood, the right type of density. And you will not break the covenant that this town has with all the people who are already in our neighborhood. The people who have all agreed to that lot size when we purchased, we all knew what we were getting. And we were getting neighbors and we did. My wife and I have been there since uh, 1998. We've been, we were the first people on Cadillac Drive. Okay, we have been there 23 years. Uh, my neighbors to the right is uh, Jim Julie Klinger have been there 22 years, right across from us. Um, but those neighbors have been there 24 years. Okay. We have been paying taxes all this time. We have been. Um, uh, interested in our properties, interested in staying there. We have raised our children there. And we have one of the very most desirable neighborhoods in town, and this is a factor you are not considering. This is kind of like, if you remember. Uh, years ago, uh, when uh, Lyle Lovett. Married Julia Roberts. Do you remember that? Lyle Lovett, the country music singer. And you could never see how those two people could ever get together. Because Lyle is not known for his great looks. Okay. But we have a desirable situation. Okay, it is desirable for them to put their pocket community next to us. It is not desirable for us to have that pocket community next to us. Okay. It is going to come out of our pocket is what's going to happen. Uh, we have so many neighbors who are alarmed at this situation because we have invested our lives. In the United States. The largest single investment that people have are in their homes. We're talking about potential investment here. The investment that have been made has been made in this neighborhood and you know the value of the homes in this neighborhood. Okay. The investment there dwarfs this project. Okay. This is an investment that we have a stake in and we can lose. Okay. These, uh, there is a reason why you look at the real estate listing for this. And you saw, uh, the quote was all abutting newly built homes. See, that's the attraction. Okay, the attraction is you have one of your best and most desirable neighborhoods. Are you really willing to cannibalize that for this project? We all want growth, but it has to be, it needs to be in the right place. Okay. We need that type of growth. And what I saw up here. Um, uh, previously from uh, from Mr. Olster's was really offensive. The idea that he's negotiating with you that if he gets uh, a few more details to you, are you going to support this? What, before even hearing from any of us who are here tonight. Okay. You know, this strikes us as being a little bit of an inside job. Okay. We are just being heard on this. We are concerned about this. We are high intensity people. We pay our taxes and we vote. Okay, this is a concern for us. Okay. Um, we're, and we're happy to pay the taxes for the services that we get out of, from Plattville. I um, and it's great and I can understand why they want to be in that area. It's close to the highway and everything. It works for me. I, I have a national legal practice. Okay. I practice uh, all throughout the United States. And I still call Plattville home. And why? Because it's the quality of the community, the quality of my neighborhood, the quality of my neighbors. Okay, they're good people. All right. These, why would you ever want to put something with that level of intensity that is only going to drag down the values? Of our homes and people are concerned, they're considering leaving. Okay, they're considering selling their homes right now. That doesn't do anything for your tax base. Why are you going to give up something you already have? For the speculation of something you may have going in the future, when you could just put more investment. Into that area and into the infrastructure and actually see other homes like our homes being built there. If people need more encouragement to build the right kind of properties there, they should. We need a better fam, multi-family platform. We need these sorts of things. But it makes no sense to sacrifice one group of residents. Okay, for speculators. It makes no sense. Makes no sense at all. Okay, so. That is, that is the risk here. Okay, we've already invested in this community and we chose to do that and we choose to stay. Okay. Um, so. And the other thing that, that has been a question in my mind is why are we talking about the financing of, of the, this operation? Before we're talking about um, a project, you know, or the changes in, in zoning. So you're talking about financing a project which is illegal right now in that area. Okay. If the core issue really is whether this zoning should be changed to allow for this sort of thing. That ought to be what we're talking about first, it would seem. Maybe not, maybe not. Also. Relative to, to the idea of not having basements, did we not have a tornado warning here today? Okay, did we, did we not have a tornado warning here today? Um, what, what's the protection in a slab situation that you want people to spend $200,000 and have no protection during storms? That doesn't make any sense either. So the issue is, you know, th- this desirability. I've heard it. Um, this is a cluster of dense housing. Okay, they can dress it up any way that they want, but that's, that's the issue. So this is our most significant asset. Mr. Ulster holds, okay. Purchased these lots as we all did, full well knowing what the zoning was at the time. So he's taking a risk. That you may not change that zoning, but we already invested. That you would keep the zoning as it is and allow us to maintain our assets. And the quality of this neighborhood. Where we want there to be further investment, of course, that needs to happen. But we purchased counting that it would not change. Okay, and he purchased speculating that it would. So we are residents, we're not speculators. He benefits from this and we are poorer for it. Not just poorer, just in terms of loss of, potential loss of value, it's in terms of the, the traffic increase, how. It's got to come by us. We are, we're just the next one up from Amador and Cadillac. We're, we're going to be significantly affected. So in this case, given the risk to your residents, us and our residents, okay. Doesn't it make sense for us as the current taxpayers here? That the obligation of the common council should be to first do know. that the obligation of the common council should be to first do no harm to what you have? Thank you.
Thank you. And I would mention at this time that Linda Stambaugh is also in the audience and has registered a guest, but did not suggest she wanted to speak. Okay? Next on my list is Suzie Rowe, 1360 Ready Drive.
My glasses look foggy. Hi, I'm Suzie Rowe and I live at 1360 Ready Drive. I've been there for 19 years. I have lived in this area and have enjoyed these beautiful half-acre lots. And all of my neighbors enjoy them too. Feel very spacious and we're not right on top of each other. Currently, there's only two lots for sale in this entire development that are available to be sold. One is on Ready Drive and the other one is on Pioneer Road. The one on Ready Drive, it is listed for $55,000 and it's a half-acre lot. And it's been on the market since April of 2020. That went on during COVID. And we all know the price of lumber right now, that it's very sky-high. The other lot I said was on Pioneer Road and it's listed for $49,900. It's a .49 acre and it's only been on the market since 4 of 21, April of 21. So the lots in this area that are for sale have sold. Golden Heights Estates was never designed for the high volume of traffic that will occur with this proposed high-density development. This proposal was originally designed to have 18 homes. Mr. Olsterhold is proposing 46 homes, which is 2.6 times more homes for the same area. It is also 2.6 times more traffic that was never envisioned on the roads of Ready Drive, Pioneer East Road, and Pioneer Road. There needs to be a traffic study done by the City of Platteville to see what impact there will be on these three roads. Will there need to be a four-way stop sign on Ready Drive and Pioneer Road East? Will there need to be a traffic signal light at Pioneer Road East and Business Highway 151? Will there need to be a traffic signal light at Pioneer Road and Southwest Road? There is already so much traffic on Pioneer Road East to Matador, to Pioneer Road, to Southwest Road, go into the Foxridge apartment area. And I do live on the corner of Matador and Ready Drive. Looking at the onsite plan, option A, that was in the council, council, city council meeting minutes August 10th and the one in the August 24th meeting minutes tonight, the plans looked identical. Now, in the public meeting, we didn't get what was presented tonight that you all have a look at now, which I don't think was really fair that he was allowed to present it because people that may have wanted to come to the meeting tonight didn't have privy to what we all saw. I don't think that that was fair at all, but anyway. But the plans were identical. However, at the, Mr. Olsterhold's had a neighborhood meeting on August 19th. And I wasn't able to attend, but I talked to a few different neighbors that did go to attend that meeting. And he had talked about that private road looping back in that all the houses are going to be 21 feet apart. And I just was going to state that it was not on that site option. And I don't know why it wasn't. I don't know why he couldn't have an option in the packet that showed these options, you know, the that he had these I guess I'm getting confused here. That he had these these items updated on the items, on the site map. And why is there no scale on the site options? Listing, for example, like one inch equals so many feet so we can tell how wide things are apart and stuff. And there's no legend or key on the site options explaining symbols, lines, et cetera. And then he had also mentioned, someone had said that there was going to be some storage unit area to go into that area that he referred to in the August 19th meeting. I don't know where a storage unit would go, but I think it would be very unsightly in our Golden Heights Estates neighborhood. Now, that's just what someone had told me. He didn't mention anything about that tonight, so I don't know. And parking is another issue. There's no room for street parking for these 46 homes. Mr. Olsterhold also stated in the meeting on August 19th that people had told me, a couple people, that there would be no street parking on that private drive along that farmer's field there. So where are the homeowners and guests supposed to park? The driveways on the private drive are only 16 feet long, which includes the dash-lined area according to the site option for the homes. A standard-sized pickup truck is 17 feet. A Ford F-150 regular cab is 17.4. A Chevy Silverado 1500 regular cab is 19 feet. Where are the people with the homes on the private roads supposed to park and their guests? The driveways on Street A show a 25-length driveway, but the measurement length does not go to the street. It stops at the dash line. What does the dash line represent? There's no legend to explain. So what does it mean? Why are there two different measurements for the driveway lengths? The homes on Street A will still have a problem with parking. So homes are still just too close together. And then are the homes going to have single, double, or triple garages? Are the driveways going to be concrete or asphalt? What are the monthly HOA fees expected to be? Will everyone be expected to pay it forever? How much are the homes expected to cost? Who owns the land that the homes are built on? Are the homes going to be individual lots? With the HOA fees on top of the mortgage and the homeowner's insurance and the property taxes and the possible PMI, which is private mortgage insurance that you would have on a commercial loan, will these individual homes truly be more affordable as truly advertised as affordable housing for the City of Platteville? Will these homes be built after they are sold to each individual? Will spec homes be built and then sold? Will spec homes be rented if they are not sold? How long will they be rented? Will individuals be able to rent out their homes? How long will they be able to be rented? Could someone purchase a number of these houses and then rent them out? Could this area eventually become a total rental community? What will the HOA rules say about renting? Who, will the HOA rules be enforced? Who will enforce them? Who will be managing the HOA? And then I asked, what is happening with lots 13 and 12? Lot 13 was .6 and lot 12 was one acre. So it's 1.6 acres. Will this be the proposed storage units area? Or will this be the parking lot for homeowners and guests? Or what other plans are there for the 1.6 acres? I guess he talked about there being, you know, more lots or something, but I don't know. Who knows till we see, you know, more information. The Golden Heights Estates neighborhood property value will decrease if that many homes are allowed to be put into that small of an area. Is the City of Platteville ready for this? Thank you.
Thank you, Suzie. Next, I have, I believe, Bonnie Plemmer. Okay, so Bonnie Plemmer has now moved from wanting to speak to registering against. Bonnie lives at 1095 Matador Drive. And I also have Nicole Smith from 1100 Matador Drive.
Hello, I'm Nicole. Everybody has pretty much said what I wanted to say. Isaac as well touched on some really good things. I just wanted to be a voice. We just bought our house two years ago, so we're really new to the area. And if this was there when we were looking for houses, we would have never bought our house, never. When we are looking for things, you know, I do think that there needs to be some incentives to live in this area. When my husband and I were looking, we, you know, I actually wanted to build behind Menards because they have this little tiny park. And I take my kids, we have three children. I take my kids to the park multiple times a week. We're always there. So I was looking for something more like that. I was looking for sidewalks because, you know, my daughter, we just took a walk and she was riding her scooter. And every time I'm like, come back, there's a car. We play out front all the time and I'm constantly like doing this to cars. Like, why are you going so fast? Do you see my children playing right here? So I do see, you know, just like everybody else, I do see the same issues. To me, this is just, it does have positives. If, you know, I do see some things that he wants to do, but cramming that many houses, I just don't see that vision at all. I, you know, with my small children, I can't live there. I can't have all those cars and all those people and yeah, I guess that's all. I really want to say that I do see some incentives of, you know, putting a park up there. Or, you know, I feel like houses have definitely gotten smaller in that area. When, when we, when I organized that meeting, I just wanted to gain more information about this. And I, I know there was something I wrote down. $250,000 was something that he said, you know, one of these houses may go for. Well, I only paid $300,000 for my house. So I feel like, you know, what's wrong with, like we said, going, going with this? There's no longer going to be seven homes. They're, they're, they're getting smaller. They're going to be 10 homes. And that's, I guess, where I would like to see more. You know, historically, that's kind of, this neighborhood has been getting smaller. You know, I'm on, I'm in a smaller home than most of these guys. I'm on a smaller lot. And I feel like I still bring value to the neighborhood. And I feel like these, the homes, if we do this, is just going to devalue my home that I just bought and not fit in with the home that I bought at all. That's my interest.
Well, folks, that is the list of, are the people who have registered to speak tonight. We will continue the discussion of this and have some additional information from the developer. I would encourage all of you who are in the audience to continue to look at the city website. Council meetings and agendas are posted on that. If you have any issue finding them, 348-9741. I would select option six that gets you to collect. And collect can tell you quite quickly how to navigate through that website if you can't find the packet. But we will make sure that tonight's presentation is on the website as well as the subdivision reimbursement agreement that we are currently reviewing. We will have this again on the agenda on the 14th of September. It will, I don't know that it'll be on for action. We'll see how that develops. If there were anything on for action, it might be relative to some type of reimbursement agreement. But we'll, we'll pull the council and see how we, we go with that. So I think that probably concludes discussion tonight unless anybody here has an additional question.
I think you add, so that if any of the neighbors in the neighborhood were not able to be here tonight, within a couple of days, Jody typically has the entire council meeting on YouTube channel. So that they wanted to skip the majority of the council meeting, just go to that portion. They can watch it themselves. So I think she has it two, three days tomorrow. Okay, corrected. So if any of your neighbors are here and they want to watch it, just pass it on to them. So.
The city has a YouTube channel. You kind of have to. I don't exactly know how you get to it because I'm not a Q2W YouTube watcher.
If you go to the homepage, right on the bottom of our homepage is kind of our secondary links. So we have our Facebook and then there's a YouTube tab right there. If you click on that, it'll automatically bring you to YouTube. There also are times that Jody does actually post the information, I think, on our Facebook page. So that's also a way you can click on that and it'll automatically take you right there. So.
I also noticed that if you go straight to YouTube and you go to the search bar, if you put Platteville W-I-S-C, all one word, that brings up the City of Platteville's YouTube site directly on YouTube.
But it's Platteville W-I-S-C, no spacing at all?
No.
Okay.
You're welcome.
Great. Well, we know we'll be here. All right. Any further questions or comments from council members? Otherwise, we're going to move on into our next agenda item. And certainly, everybody here is more than, more than welcome to stay as we have a work session on our comprehensive capital improvement plan. I noticed how exciting. Okay. Great.